We're going to call to order the Merrimack School District, SAU 26 School Board Meeting for November 7th, 2022. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Chuck Mower in the room, and it is his birthday.
Happy birthday Chuck Mower.
Also, I'd like to just take a moment, since we just said the Pledge of Allegiance, to remind everyone that Friday is Veterans Day, and we want to thank all those who have served and are serving in our armed forces to protect our freedoms. All right, so we will open the floor to public participation. If the public would like to participate, please come to the mic, state your name and your address. If you are a student, you do not need to state your address, simply that you are a student, so I'll open up the floor. All right, seeing no one come to the mic, we will move on to recognitions. All right, moving on to informational updates, superintendent update.
Thank you. You know, it's never a pleasure to open a meeting with bad news, but you know, we know that we lost a very highly respected and beloved colleague over the weekend. Victoria Monhin, who was only 27 years old, passed away late on Saturday evening, and I'd like to see if we could take 30 seconds of silence in memory of Victoria, because she was just an outstanding colleague. Thank you very much, and to Victoria's parents, please know that you have our deepest sympathies and our support, and please know we will help you in any way possible. I do know that there's a GoFundMe page, I should say, the support for her husband also, excuse me, because Victoria was married and a loving wife, and so there is a GoFundMe page. If you check on our website, we'll have that posted tomorrow. I want to echo Lori what you said, thank you to all the veterans. We're here tonight because of veterans, past and present, and much appreciative. Tomorrow, as we know, is a very important election day. I would ask those people who are driving into and out of our parking lots and driveways at J Muse and Merrimack Middle School to please proceed with caution tomorrow in particular. It should be a very, very busy, busy day. Once again, I want to reiterate what town moderator Lynn Christensen has asked, and that is that there be no parking, no tents, no campaign materials at J Muse or Merrimack Middle School tonight through tonight until about 6 o'clock tomorrow morning. All right, and we appreciate everybody for cooperating with that. Some positive news from the schools. First of all, the football team, the Varsity Football Team, has advanced to the NHIAA Division I Football Tournament with a 14-6 win over Portsmouth, Oyster River, on Friday night. They'll now travel to Londonderry on Friday, November 11th, Veterans Day, to take on the Lancers, and kickoff time is to be determined, but it's anticipated it should be somewhere around 7 o'clock. Two members of the Varsity Cross Country Team competed in also the NHIAA Meet of Champions on Saturday, November 5th, at Alveron High School. Melanie Bedard finished 60th out of 132 runners in the 5K, and Cameron Fredette finished 20th out of 146 runners in the 5K. The results qualify Cameron for the New England Championship Meet to be held November 12th at a Pontiac Asset High School in North Sichewett, Rhode Island. So congratulations to Melanie and to Cameron, a job well done. Students in the class of 2023, which I understand is an outstanding class, right? Class of 2023 had a great annual Halloween breakfast. Best group costume, I went to Steve Irwin and his crocodile. They won Six Flags tickets for senior week. And the best individual costume, and Caitlin, maybe you can help me with this, because it wasn't on the email, best individual costume went to the Swedish Chef from The Muppets, but I don't know who was wearing that costume, do you know?
Ryan Terusso was wearing the Swedish Chef costume, and Megan Cottrell and Tyler Bernard were Steve Irwin and the crocodile.
Thank you for clarifying that. It says additionally, Julia Thebo and our own Caitlin Vanney did an amazing job at the Merrimack Police Department's Annual Senior Fair. They volunteered their time to teach senior citizens about social media and their personal devices. They taught an elderly man with Parkinson's about speech to text. Thank you for, thank you, thank you for doing that. They're two amazing young women, and they did such a great job that those in attendance asked for these help sessions to be more regular. And that's interesting, because in Westford, where I used to work, we would sometimes talk about having some courses of cyber for seniors, and so that's very important, and thank you for doing that, Caitlin. The Merrimack Middle School, at the Merrimack Middle School, having students write thank you notes with out in the front to be delivered to a million thanks organization, just in time for them to pass out active service members to active service members and veterans for the holidays. Kristen Blaine Cohen, our teacher at MMS, has sent me a sample of the work. I'm going to pass it around to you, and it's outstanding, and I'm very proud of our students for doing that. From the middle school also, from staff member Rich Loftus, Rich is starting an intramural fitness program at the middle school. There was typically not a, went to intramural, but Principal Adam Carragher was willing to let the staff try filling in some areas of need for students, and they are accepting registrations from the students. And the activities will include ping pong, body resistance training, walking jogging program, resistance band training, balance training, lightweight training, agility ladder, and other fun activities that have a purpose. Begins November 17th and runs until December 21st, Mondays and Thursdays, and the students must have a signed permission slip. So we are, as always, very proud of our students, and very proud of our staff, who are always engaged in wonderful and meaningful activities. And that is it from myself.
Any comments from the board?
Just a couple real quick. Going back to the election day, I know our moderator does a great job with that. Just wondering, have there been any conversation about security in the building during these days, especially since we have a lot of people coming into our buildings with students in them?
Yes, the police department have been very good in monitoring the sites and the staff. The principals have made sure that the staff is very much aware that there will be people in the building, although they will be in relatively isolated areas. Certainly, any election day is a day that we have heightened awareness in the buildings.
Great. And then the other thing, just adding to our accolades here, in case this one slipped by, there were two Merrimack students that got accepted into the Jazz All-State Band this past couple of weeks ago. Hakari McDowell on alto saxophone, which they only took four alto saxophones, and he was one of them, and then Trey Grant on trumpet, they only take 10 trumpets, and he was one of them, so very cool that they got in.
And as a former band member at Chelmsford High School, I'm sorry I didn't know that, and I'll make sure that I check in on that from now on.
All right. We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening. I had a moment this week where I finally feel like I'm finding my groove, getting around Merrimack. I actually got from the SAU building to the high school, to the middle school, by Buckley's, and I just had a moment where I was like, I feel like I'm finally doing okay. Now, Reed's Ferry, I still have to put that into my GPS, but I'm getting there.
Of course, I was leading the way, and she was following me all the way. No, I'm only kidding.
Yeah, that's true, you had to give me some directions. But I just want to thank my central office partners and the district leadership and the teachers, they've all just been so welcoming to me, and I'm just so appreciative. This is really a special place to be, which you all already know. Speaking of the leadership team and the teachers, I just am hopeful that the board and the community is really aware of how committed I have found people to be around the continual improvement of the educational experience that we're providing to students. I've had some really great conversations with folks from preschool through high school, community members, about what are the current needs of students. One of the themes that has emerged is really looking at our pre-COVID systems and protocols and routines to see if they match sort of where we are right now. And that's a really exciting thing for me, because we're really having really deep and intentional conversations about curriculum, instruction, and assessment. To that end, one of the protocols that keeps coming up is how we provide students with practice and feedback through homework. And so I've started to have some initial conversations with teachers and administrators, and hoping to have some possible recommendations to the current protocol, not the policy that the board adopted in 2008, but really how that policy is extrapolated into everyday practice. So I know that, you know, sometimes homework is a hot topic for boards, for communities, for homes, I'm a parent myself, so just really looking at how we can provide students with the practice they need to fill some of the academic gaps that have emerged, not just in Merrimack, but you know, across the country. All districts are really taking a closer look at, you know, what they're doing to try to improve them. A few updates, we do have a pretty active demo account for iReady, which is a KDA8 Intervention and Diagnostic Assessment that addresses the goal that we had set this summer, looking at some progress monitoring tools, so I'm pretty excited about that. We're hoping to make a decision certainly in time for the budget. We're looking at an update to our phonics program at the lower elementary schools, so that's really great news, and we have some really capable language arts coordinators in Jeanette and Holly, and Bree, and Lori, and Jenny, really leading that work. So really feeling good about moving forward there with the recommendation. I've drafted a curriculum review cycle framework that I'm hoping to share with the leadership team and, you know, possibly with all of you, just to kind of guide our work once we get everything put into Edge of Planet and we're moving forward, so that there is a cycle that we're continuing to look at. That'll also address some of the other things that have come up around curriculum instruction and assessment, including competencies, you know, where is the appropriate place for them to be developed and implemented? How often and when are we looking at our instruction to make sure that our UDL practices are being embedded into everyday instruction? So, you know, just really a tool for us to use for the future. And finally, our final meeting of the Vision of a Learner Committee is next Tuesday, November 15th, so if you're on that committee, we're meeting at 3:00 PM at J Muse in Room 126, and we will be looking at the next stage of that work, which is how do we share that vision appropriately with the community, and how do we turn that work into words and actions that will be everyday practice for our students?
Comments from the board?
May I just say, as you can, you can assess Amy has not been very busy in the last...
Not at all.
I have, I have, I don't think I have seen Amy sit down for more than 10 minutes in any day since she's been employed here.
I was going to say something kind of complimentary to that, in that that was a great update, just because there was so much of it, and it hit so many bullet points of things that I've been looking at in the district going, I really wish we would look at that or talk about that or improve that, so thank you.
All right, moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Well, it's rather a hard act to follow, but I did have a meeting last Tuesday. Mr. Martin was there, I'm not going to steal his thunder, but I'm just going to mention it was kind of a year-end review with the Budget Committee, and kind of a conversation on what their thoughts may be for future budgets that we have, and kind of a picture of where we're at and where we see things. Obviously, there is going to be a joint meeting between Budget Committee and the board, and I feel that's really going to be valuable to both boards to finally get on the same page and share topics and ideas and everything like that, and I will be looking forward to that happening, so I appreciate that. But, you know, Mr. Martin will fill us in on committee reports, so.
All right.
And we also sang "God Bless America" instead of doing the Pledge of Allegiance, right?
Oh, I got something on that later, don't worry.
Oh, yeah, good, good, good.
All right, School Board update. So we have a couple things. First of all, we're very excited, the school board has offered, and Bill Olson has accepted a new two-year contract. The board agrees that Bill is an exceptional leader who works tirelessly for our school community. We are extremely grateful for his service and commitment to our town. Really, the whole SAU staff has worked so well together, and we appreciate all of you, so congratulations and thank you. We also appreciate the way our schools honor our veterans, either through thank you notes, and I know my grandchildren's school asks for pictures of veterans so they can do some media, and the board also wants to thank all of our veterans in the community. And then finally, yesterday, the NHIAA Spirit Chairman, and so Merrimack competed in the competition, and the Merrimack Spirit Team came out in the middle, they did very well. But the reason I bring this up is, I've been doing this for like 17 years, and for 17 years, a lot of athletic directors just don't attend, and every single year, Mike Susie is there, and he cheers those kids on, and he stays, and he waits to talk to them after, and I really appreciate that, that our athletic director values all sports teams and shows up, and so I just really wanted to say that tonight, because I think it's important. And that's it for me for right now. Oh, earlier, we forgot to say, our respected board member Jenna Hardy is not here tonight, but she's excused.
And Lori, may I just say, thank you very much for the confidence that you've expressed to me, and I thoroughly enjoy working along with you and the central office staff, the entire staff of the school community, this is a wonderful community, and it's our task to make great things happen for our students.
All right, and finally, our student representative update.
I don't have anything super interesting tonight, but there is a Class of 2023 fundraiser, so for Thanksgiving, we're doing Texas Roadhouse rolls, and currently, there's a link on our Merrimack High School Class of 2023 Facebook page that you can go and order them. The pickup dates are Monday, the 21st, and Tuesday, the 22nd, and it closes tomorrow night, so if you want rolls, get them fast. That's all. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. Seeing none, we will move on to new business, and we will go on to our preliminary discussion of fiscal year 2024 school board priorities.
Yes, it's, as the old holiday song goes, it's that most wonderful time of the year when we begin to take a look at constructing a budget for the following fiscal year. And I wanted to provide you with a few slides that will help us focus a little bit on what we're going to discuss, so we don't need to make all the decisions this evening, you may need some time to think about it in terms of budget priorities. But what I, what I was most intrigued by is that over the last couple of years, you've been amazingly consistent in the identification and articulation of the needs of students and staff in the, in the school system, along with the working towards what's in the best interest of taxpayers. So the first slide I presented is what you developed with the prior committee for the 2022-2023 budget priorities, which was, you see, social, emotional learning, competitive pay and benefits, which the town so wonderfully supported in terms of attracting and retaining quality educators, working on graduation rates and student support, focus on the need to continuously integrate technology into the instructional process, and a responsible capital improvement and facilities plan, making sure that we have well-maintained, up-to-date facilities that are clean and healthy, which is extraordinarily important to, to learning environment. And then in June, we had a wonderful goals setting session with Primex facilitating that session, and we focused on developing a culture that's built on mutual trust and respect. I think we're doing a very good job in working, working at that at all levels in this school district. The need to address alternative pathways to graduation, and I'll talk to that in a minute, improve our learning outcomes, we've talked about that several times, that is non-negotiable, we absolutely need to improve our assessment scores, and we'll do that through sustained effort that Amy has already started working on, working with our staff, in terms of curriculum updates and renewals and sequencing, et cetera. Having facilities and equipment that are safe, secure, clean, and healthy, and reviewing our policies. And I think you're seeing that we have developed a policy schedule that shows where we are in the first, second, and third readings, and what's upcoming in policies, that is something we want to continue with almost every single meeting, because the policies are the rules of the road of an organization, and it's important that we make sure that they're updated and that they reflect the most recent federal and state statutory requirements. I wanted to provide you just a little peek at some of what we have been discussing in terms of potential 2023-2024 budget priorities, and I've indicated in there that these things I've listed, and I'll read them in a second, ought to be further shaped by conversations with you and our staff, students, the Budget Committee, our staff and students and the community, and we're focusing on alternative pathways and extended learning opportunities. We're developing a job description right now for Director of Alternative Pathways and ELOs. I want to have one person who is specifically devoted to that task, because as the old saying goes, if multiple people are in charge, no one's in charge, and we want great results and accountability from that, that effort. We want to make sure that we budget appropriately for any staffing, materials, and technology that might be needed, any transportation that might be needed for the Alternative Pathways program. We're looking at the curriculum updates and revision cycles. Amy's doing a fabulous job in meeting with our staff throughout the school system in terms of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what might need to be updated and tweaked a little bit in terms of curriculum and instructional practice and professional development also. We are now looking at, and we are planning for a centralized registration process beginning next year. Many school systems, as you know, still have a distributed system where the parents go to each separate school. Sometimes that can result in errors in our student database system. If a child lives on Stevens Road, sometimes it's entered Stevens Road in another building, if they have a child, Stevens Avenue or Stevens Street, and that all creates errors. We want consistency with the secretaries in the schools, the administrative assistants have done a fabulous job, but what a centralized registrar will do is allow us to understand our enrollment capacities and our enrollment renewal and in migration and out migration in real time, much faster than we have been able to in the past. We're taking a look at what we might need for intervention services in terms of addressing some of the mental health needs of students in the school system at the middle school and high school. We presently, in my discussions with you that go back months, we presently have a person at the middle school and a person at the high school in those roles. We need to recognize those positions financially in the 2024 budget. We want to make sure that we present to you and to the Budget Committee and the town a responsible technology replacement cycle. One of the things that is oftentimes difficult for a school system, a school district, is when a new school is built, or there's a major addition or renovation, and there are funds to equip it with a significant amount of technology, well, that generates certainly an ongoing need for an annual appropriation to make sure that we have a responsible replacement cycle, and that certain technology components might be moved from an area of more intense use to lower grade levels with less intense use, so recycling some of our equipment, certainly. We're looking at, Amy and I are looking at, along with the leadership team, and I know she's meeting with staff, about a little bit more concentration on reading and math specialists, that we want to make sure that we're providing adequate intervention services as a, as an intervening measure between the general ed classroom and recommending a child for special education. You know, when a child is recommended for special education, sometimes they're not found to be in need of special education services, but other times, in school systems that don't have intervention services, that's pretty much the only alternative. And the impact of that is, a child may just need several months' worth of intervention work, okay, to become more proficient in either reading skills or math skills, and from a financial perspective for the community, when a child goes from a general education setting to a special education setting, the cost to educate that child almost doubles. And so it's, it always behooves the school district to look at intervening measures that can be taken that may be in the best interest of students, first and foremost, but also maybe in the best interest of taxpayers. We are looking in our conversations with Special Education Director Heather Barker, the need for a behavioral and emotional disabilities consultant. Amy and I have been talking about the desire to bring in some specialists in different curriculum areas who have worked on competencies, to bring forth a plan for you and for educators of some quality and authentic competencies that will be incorporated into our instructional program. What we, what we don't want to do with either the competencies or ELOs is engage in window dressing. We don't have any patience for that, all right? It has to be authentic, it has to be well-done, and something that you and the students, the families, and our staff are, and that's what we're working towards. And Amy has been working aggressively also in terms of taking a look, reviewing at, and proposing some progress monitoring tools and assessments. So I think what we preliminarily have in mind is consistent with what you have expressed in the priorities for this current school year, but also the goals that you articulated very well in the June goal-setting meeting. And once again, these are just of a preliminary nature, these are things that we're working on right now, and there may be other things that you consider to be of a higher priority. And so these were our discussions, discussions with the, with the Budget Committee, with our staff, because we're going around to each school also, we're going to start those listening tours shortly, to listen to the staff in terms of what's important to them, in terms of their ability to do their jobs more effectively. What are the current and emerging needs of students that we are doing a good job at meeting at, but what, what are the needs, current and emerging, that we might need to maybe address in a little bit different way than, than what we have been? And the last slide, just quickly, is, you know, shows that you and the community and the Budget Committee really form the foundation of developing the quality school district. And up above, we've listed those supports that are essential and that are evident in quality school systems throughout the country. And I have to tell you, from what I've seen, I've been very thankful of you and the Budget Committee and the community for the amazing support that you've all shown to this school district, and, you know, we're committed to, and I know it's a well-worn term, but we're committed to a continuous improvement, that's what we're all about, because the minute we stop and take pause and say, well, everything's just fine, is the day we begin to regress as a school district, and we don't want to go there. So that is just a little bit of a background to kind of... So that is just a little bit of a background to kind of lay the foundation for your discussion of what you feel. Other than what you may have articulated already, might be priorities that we want to develop and for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget.
All right, I will open it up to the board for our discussion about what each of us feels is our priority or priorities. Lori.
Discussion, so. The easy part about this budget is that we had the goals meeting in June and we, as a school board and administrative team, had a focus and, you know, you, a lot of the things that you brought up are all part of our goals, continuing to hire and retain highly qualified teachers. School safety was another major priority. And again, we need to do the safety assessment to find out, you know, do we need more cameras? Do we need the buzzers on the doors? Do we, you know, have a buzz in area for our schools? In all main offices, is there a panic button that can that can go off? So we don't, we don't have that information yet, but that, I think, is is a critical point. Again, we've talked about this numerous times, having a research effective reading program at all elementary schools. Ensuring, Billy brought this up, a competency based system. We're going to need a lot of professional development hours because we want to have common assessments at all grade levels. The master plan is totally supported. When we look at the master plan and we look at our short term needs and our long term needs, I think getting rid of the Brentwood building, demolishing it should be a priority to us. I think it's, for me, I think that's a safety concern possibly. I'm glad you brought up the high school graduation rates, looking for alternative programs and alternative pathways. Having ELOs and and work skills and and is going to definitely help. Technology, again, making sure that we're we're continuing with one on one and that we have, we're building towards capacity. Our facilities, again, as part of the capital improvement plan, Matt does a great job with that. But keeping, you know, ventilation and things that we need, but also not taking off that we we eventually are going to need a superintendent's building. It's something that we've talked about for twenty years in this district. And our superintendent building is in a house and Bill's room's a bedroom and it's, we need a conference space. We we do need to have a long term goal, it might not be this year, but we've got to get it back on, you know, in the as a focus. And, you know, I think we talked about this also, you know, the balance being responsible to the taxpayer, but also to our educational system. And so I think we need to assess our current needs with reality. And, you know, as we look at things that we need to bring in and hire new staff, is there anywhere that there can be cuts so that it balances out for everyone? That would be my five cents.
May I just say in in my update, one of the things I forgot to mention, picking up on school safety, is Matt and I did tour the high school earlier this week, last week, excuse me, on Thursday of last week, with Neil Neil Martin, who is with the state and homeland security. We spent a couple of hours touring the school with Neil, and he will be writing up his report and providing that to us. And on my way home tonight, I am going to buy a Powerball ticket, and if I win, I will fund a new central office building.
Other board members, would you like to comment?
Yeah, and and again, I love a lot of the the work that you've done here and and a lot of the explanations you've given us. Having the ELL, ELO coordinator, that's that's a full time gig. That's making connections in the in your town, making connections at the state level, planning curriculum assessment. I mean, that's a full time teaching job, so that that is a huge plus in my book. Competencies takes years, it takes years to get that stuff established. It takes buy in, it takes professional development, it takes writing quality performance assessments, it takes implementing them, consistency. So and and starting that work as soon as possible. I should have started a long time ago for everybody, New Hampshire in general is behind on on that. But having that conversation now and planning for it budget wise is is critical. And I think ultimately that will fix so many assessment issues that we already run into. You know, just anyway, I could talk all night about competencies, but and I'm never going to stop talking about a performing arts facility, even though it's not an immediate priority. But it's something that we should definitely think about long term. The fact that we have one of the top music programs in the state performing in a basketball court is a is a crime to me. So obviously not for next year, but long term planning, I think that's got to be something that we talk about. Especially when we talk about facilities and, you know, appropriate educational spaces, right now, they don't have that. So and in in general, looking at our facilities with our population growing and, you know, looking at our class sizes and where do we, you know, where where do we need to add space? Because I know that especially up and coming at the elementary school, that's that's gonna, it's a factor, it's an issue, so. And I think that was all my notes, so I'll stop.
I have a good segue from Ken talking a little bit about long term planning, especially facilities planning. This, obviously, I'm very new at this, and I've watched some old meetings from last year and the year before, so I sort of have some of the answers, but and I know that there's like various legal requirements on how you can save money, but I have always wondered why we don't have any sort of like capital reserve funds and stuff. And I know that there's like a lot of, there's a lot of requirements, like there's only certain ways you can keep money, and there's only certain amounts that you can keep. But as someone who like budgets for future projects, it always kind of has me going, well, well, why? Why, why do we have to get a warrant article every time we need a new roof? Why can't we like be planning for this ahead of time and and whatnot? So my apologies if it's something that's going to get explained again, why it's not a great idea, but it's something I would like to hear in any case. And the other thing that kind of came up for me when I was watching the first budget committee meeting was Matt said we had something like thirty openings for paraprofessionals in the district. And that can't be easy for folks who are who are teaching our kids right now. I I can only imagine that they're scrambling to cover those, and I would like, when we're considering the budget, to figure out, okay. I get that some of it's, you know, probably availability of staff, but what can we do to make sure that those positions are filled? Because I'm sure that will improve our educational outcomes as well with all these other overarching goals we have. And then, yeah, just keeping in mind that the price of everything is going up right now. I know inflation's an issue, and I know utility costs are an issue, and that's, it's going to be a balancing act this year, I think. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and just you made me think of something, Naomi. And talking at the budget committee meeting, which I'll talk a little bit more about later, Matt, he, you know, he was very realistic. You know, we're entering, we're in one of the most challenging economic times in a long time right now, and now we're talking about budget. And, you know, what do we want to add? And so what Lori's saying about where can we cut the cost, I think is so important. I mean, even just getting paper now, I was told the other day is, you know, quadruple what it used to be, just.
You can't even get, excuse me, for instance.
No, please.
Companies to bid on paper.
Yeah.
I mean, we found the lowest price at WB Mason's like fifty-nine bucks a box, which is like astronomical. Sorry, go.
No, no, I'm glad you brought that up. And it's not even like that paper is expensive, it's getting the paper here is what's expensive. So, you know, I I'm usually one that's like, yes, we got to do all these things, but I we, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but we have to just really keep that in mind. It's tough for everybody right now.
And that's a perfect segue to my number one priority. We passed a massive budget last year, and we fixed a major problem in our teaching salary grid. And the taxpayers of this town recognized that 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 needed to be fixed, and they overwhelmingly supported our teachers. We have to, obviously, the goals, I'm one hundred percent behind, these things are obviously needed. We need to find savings in the budget where we can and add what we can. But we've got to be really careful about where our taxpayers are right now. When people are choosing between ramen and hot dogs and heating oil, we want to keep that in mind. We want our teachers to not have to make those kinds of decisions either. And so I think one of my priorities is what are our priorities for this budget year? Everything on our list is super important. Everything on our list is critical to recover from COVID, to bring not our test scores back to what they were pre-COVID, but to exceed that and improve our rankings. But we're going to have to take one bite at a time because of the current economy. And so my priority is helping all of us and working along with the budget committee, figure out where can we save? And what can we do this year? And what do we have to bite the bullet on this year and what has to wait? I one hundred percent support everything in the slides, everything my fellow board members have said. And if I won the Powerball, it would be so easy to 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 give a nice boost to these things. But we do have to be realistic on what we can do in just one budget year. And so that's the hard part, and I have to do this in my household, and so many of us who do this on a regular basis for our homes understand sometimes we have to balance what we can do right now and what may have to wait till the next fiscal year. And so I think that conversation is going to be hard between leadership, the board and the budget committee. But I think we can do it, and I think we can produce a budget that the voters and mayor and Mac can get behind. Any other comments?
First of all, thank you for that input, and it's 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 encouraging to see how consistent we are and how how much we are in concert in terms of understanding what we are strong at and understanding where we might need to do some work in the in the school district. So thank you for that great input.
All right, moving on, we want to talk about our budget meeting dates and timeline.
I believe we have talked about the possibility of incorporating a joint school board budget committee meeting into one of our regularly scheduled meetings, if I'm if I'm correct.
Yes.
And so, you know, we have, we have several meetings coming up. We have one on the twenty-first of November, then December fifth and December nineteenth. Those are our next three regularly scheduled meetings, and so I'd be interested in your input. And and Chuck's in terms of if any of those dates seem to be possible.
My birthday is January eleventh, so the tenth and twelfth are perfect.
So Chuck, we you, we we want to talk about meeting with the budget committee. We'd like to hear from you.
I appreciate that it's always difficult to find that balance in everybody's busy schedule. And, you know, it used to be years ago that people weren't having to face so many choices in their life. And so there was a community coming together around issues of major importance. Well, this is still a community issue of major importance, even though there's tremendous acceleration that seems to keep people from coming together and supporting this. Budget committee is large. It's difficult. I have always been one to believe that someone should set a date and the rest of us should show up. That, to me, is the most straightforward way to handle a responsibility as an elected official. So I will leave it in the hands of the school board. And I'll tell you briefly what my expectations are in that more than anything else, I, as chairman of the board, the committee, excuse me, wanted to provide an opportunity for there to be a greater sharing of responsibilities and ideas and and input relative to constructing a budget. It's something that has escaped us in past years, and I I think it's more important now than ever that we have as many people on board with an idea whose time has come. And I can sense that this evening. Knowing how fundamentally certain you all are about the path forward. And I will tell you that the budget committee feels much the same way. And so more than anything else, I simply want the budget committee to be able to talk with the school board. Not everybody follows as closely perhaps as I would like them to. And and so it's a chance to get together and reaffirm what some of the interests are and support for the school district. You know, years ago, we used to have something in town called a joint session. Where every single elected officer or committee person came together in one room. Many of them had never met each other even before. I mean, you had Parks and Recreation, you had the Conservation Commission, you had, you had, you had, you had, you had. And I often thought that that was a valuable thing. And that it just got everybody together in one room who was working for community. And so knowing how much friction has been realized over the years. And I guess in some senses, our government is set up in some adversarial way to promote that. That, you know, what might ultimately sift out be the the best we can do. But I'd like to believe that we can do better when we all participate more soberly. And I I I am just amazed, I have never felt quite this good about where our school district has the opportunity to go. And I assure you, I've been around a long time, perhaps not as long as Bill, but. And so I I'd like to leave it in good hands in that this isn't the the joint meetings of past practice and so forth, it is a, it is a coming together of the people that care about our school district to see how we can inform each other and support each other.
So with what Chuck has said, I would recommend we do December fifth. That is prior to our budget meetings where we hear from the different departments. We could allocate a time of our regular school board meeting. My concern about two weeks from now is, that's right before Thanksgiving, there might be some people, you know, on their way out. And December nineteenth, that's really getting close to Christmas. And I think if we want to maximize the number of people who can attend from the budget committee, December fifth might be a best date, what do you think?
I'm going to be in Ireland on December fifth. Well, then if there's any way that we could do it in two weeks, I would, because this is making history, I would love to be there.
Two weeks is in after Thanksgiving, is that what we're talking about?
Monday before Thanksgiving.
Monday before Thanksgiving. I will not be available that evening. I will be at a festival with my students.
And the nineteenth of December is the first day of Hanukkah. And the 19th of December is the first day of Hanukkah, just. So, um, the other option we have before us is to have. A special called business meeting just for the purpose of the school board and the Budget Committee meeting. We can have a special called school board meeting on, just, are you in town December 12th? Lori? How, leadership team, December 12th?
Does that work for everyone? So could we move the fifth meeting to the 12th? Cause the whole idea was to have them have less nights.
We, we can do that.
So that way they don't have more nights.
We appreciate that very much.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Is that okay, everyone? So you can Christmas shop on the 5th and?
So I will entertain a motion to have a, uh, our regular scheduled board meeting moved from the 5th to the 12th. And to meet with, meet with the Budget Committee. So moved. Second? Seconded by Lori. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So December 12th. All right. Parent student handbook update.
Well, this doesn't really require any, any discussion or any vote other than I wanted to. Put in your packet, um. What the revised handbooks look like. We had them professionally typeset. Uh, we had an, uh, table of contents put at the front. And I think it's an immeasurable improvement to what we had. Been experiencing for a number of years for handbooks. So. The purpose of the item on the agenda was nothing more than to give you an idea of what type of handbook we're going to have moving forward. What we'll do is, uh, these are documents that need to be reviewed every single year and voted on. That's requirement and it's important that we continue to make every update in terms of any state or federal statutory requirement. That has changed and incorporate that into the handbook. So. Uh, I hope you're pleased with the way this looks, uh, because it's come out very, very nicely. I wanna thank the principals, uh, you know, the central office colleagues, uh, for the amount of work that. They've all put into it, uh, because I, I think it's a job well done.
Comments from the board?
Uh, it, it looks great. Looks, you know, very easy to read and, um, very nice layout. I took the time to sit and read it all. Uh, and, um, one of my kind of sort of soft. Issues, I suppose you would call it, not, not one of my big issues, um, with school districts everywhere, including my own. Just cause I, I zeroed in on it is dress code. Which, you know, I, looking at the ones here, it's got a lot of vague language that I don't really know what. It means and I'm not saying I have the answers to it. It's gonna take someone who's much more innovative and forward thinking to. Somewhere in the world create a, a true dress code that isn't, you know, um. You know, biased against any one community and, um, one that we actually follow would be great too. Uh, and I'm not saying our teachers and administrators don't really, uh, give the effort to follow it, but it's really hard. Uh, and I know that just from my own school to, to stick to any dress code. So maybe I'm open, I can't, opening a can of worms, but. Um, it would be great to, at, when we go to review these district wide to. Get students involved with that conversation, get community members involved in that conversation. Um, again, I don't have the answers, but I'm sure somebody out there does. And, um. It'd be great to actually have one that we can follow and stick to and enforce.
Students, um, are always of great importance in, uh, including, to include in a discussion about dress code. As we all know, whether it's 20 years ago now or 20 years from now, dress code will be a hot button, uh, you know, in, in every school district. So.
Right. Well, and I see here like the first thing, short shorts. And I think if you polled 15 people, they would all have a different definition of what that means. So.
So I agree because when we, when we approve the dress code, I think it's really important to say. Give as much detail as, as possible. And, uh, I also really like that students help write the dress code because. What I found in my past life, students are actually very conservative when it comes to dress code and they really want. Um, students to dress respectfully and responsibly. And when it comes from them, it actually works. So. That can be something that we can work in the future.
Caitlin, can you write a new dress code for us?
Um, I believe that, um, Students for Student Advocacy actually helped on our most recent one for the high school. And that's one of the clubs that we have where students can have the opportunity to be involved with the district. But I do want to echo what Mr. Martin was saying, that vague dress codes are so annoying. Because even like, especially at the high school level. From teacher to teacher, they'll have a different interpretation of what the dress code means. And so like, some teachers could find something that a student is wearing completely appropriate. They're just wearing clothes. But then another teacher who might just be more personally conservative with their views might be like, no, that's the most inappropriate thing on the planet. And it's just frustrating from a student point of view when it's not clearly laid out like. What each of these things actually means.
Well stated.
All right, moving on to.
One quick, quick thing, um. I agree. And I really liked, I was like looking at the index going, wow, this is great. It has an index. Um, so I, I love the changes, um, that you made and I have a lot of like. When, when it is time to review this, I have a lot of suggestions and ideas. Don't need to talk about them today, but just so I don't forget.
Naomi, if you wanna begin sending those to us, you know, we have a, we have a folder that we. Keep from year to year in terms of updates to student handbook.
All right. Do we have any other new business? All right, we'll move on to policies. The first reading of pupil safety and bullying.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Uh, all of the policies that are presented to you at every meeting. Have been reviewed by our legal counsel. In some cases, uh, some of the languages you see in here. Uh, in red, uh, are suggestions that, uh, allow us to be more statutorily compliant. Um, I, as we usually do, I would recommend on this first policy, since this is the first reading, that you. Take a vote to waive the first reading and that we will put this out for public comment.
I'll entertain a motion to waive the first reading.
Make a motion to waive the first reading.
Seconded.
Second?
All those in favor? 400. This will be available for the public to take a look at and comment. Third review of use of physical restraint.
Can I make a couple of comments on it?
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna send, I found a couple of typos that I'm gonna do what I did last time with typos and send it to, uh, Mr. Olson and to, um, Andy. Just like various like little tiny things, capitalization and, and missing letters. But then my, my kinda media comments were. Um, I was wondering in number three, electronic devices, if we should add social media to that. It defines what electronic devices are and I laughed when I saw pagers on there. And so I'm wondering if maybe we need to, um, modernize that a little bit.
Yeah, good, good point. Would you, would you send that one to us?
Yes. And, um.
My fax, that is.
Um, and then. On page four, this one is a little bit. A little bit more, needs a little bit more, um, kind of, uh, careful thought. Um, the disciplinary consequences for violations of the policy. Uh, it talks about reserving the right to impose disciplinary measures in the last sentence, which is great about. Um, where appropriate, we encourage administration, uh, and school district staff to seek alternatives to traditional discipline, including but not limited to. Um, early intervention, alternative dispute resolution, conflict resolution, other similar measures. I, I think that's great. Um. But I also just was wondering sort of how we also make sure that we're being strict enough. If that makes sense, how we're, we're, uh, not tolerating it even while we're attempting remediation instead of, you know. Okay, you bullied, you're suspended and the matter is over. So that was my other thought when I was reading through the policy.
I will say that, um, um, this year. Uh, instead of having a leadership team meeting every Wednesday. We have one every other Wednesday. And what we're doing is we're reserving the off Wednesdays. For periodic training. And so we have our legal counsel oftentimes addressing us with issues such as this. Uh, that I think we're gonna find very, to be very helpful. Uh, throughout the conduct of our, of our jobs and working with our staff and working with our students because, you know, we do wanna take that restorative approach. But when do we make the assessment that, um, it's, it's time for something to change here because something is not working?
So, um, my comments on the, um. Bullying policy is, I, uh, going back to what Naomi said, I really think that there needs to be some really clear professional development. That everyone understands New Hampshire has the strictest laws in the nation on bullying. However, it doesn't stop bullying in our schools. So, um, you know, I want us to be. Make sure that we have the data, make sure that we're doing the written reports. And then. As a school district, I would like to see us, um, to follow up instead of being stricter, to come up with, um, a procedure that we follow. So. Uh, we have some of it, but you know, you have two students that are, are bullying. Sometimes. Um, there needs to be a mediation. There needs to be a contract. The, the student needs to be told. Um, if you bully or if your friends now bully, there will be consequences because. What happens is sometimes the bully will stop, but now the friends will join in on the bullying. And so if we have a clear. You know, if this happens, that this is what's going to happen. And sometimes taking the time. To have a mediation with the two students to get them to understand this is not gonna be tolerated. Um, you need to, you need to try to either just separate and go the other way and not have conversations. You don't have to be friends with everyone. However, you're not going to do anything to retaliate or here's the consequence and be very strict with it. So that, that would be my 10 cents.
Okay, good comments.
Any other comments? All right, now we'll move on to the third review of the use of physical restraint and secl- seclusion.
And once again, this one has been reviewed with the, uh, the edits that you see in the additions or deletions by our legal counsel. And so, you know, the third reviews and votes, uh, then become, uh, becomes an act of policy. And so. Uh, that's the importance of these next three policies with the use of physical restraint and seclusion, which is, um. Uh, which we receive, I will say that we, we have received training in this area and we will continue. To receive training throughout the year in, uh, physical str- restraint and, and seclusion because that's an extraordinarily important one. Uh, for all staff to, to understand.
Any comments from the board on this one? Then I will entertain a motion to accept this policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the policy as written.
Second? All those in favor? 400.
All right, thank you.
Third review of public participation at board meetings.
Yes, and if you recall, uh, this is the, um, policy that we, um. Opted for the ability for people to make comments on items outside of the, uh, the agenda. And that is incorporated in here.
Any comments from the board?
I just have one. Um, so a former board member has reached out to, to talk about this and I, um, so. What, what I understood is that, um, making comments on the agenda items, but what I think. What I think he was saying is at the end of the meeting, stu- people can make comments about agenda items.
Well, I think, so I think there were two things in the email. That was one to put it in the policy, but we already do that. We can. We, we already do that in our existing agendas.
Right. And I think maybe he was worried it wasn't there.
Correct. The other one was the request to make agenda comments during the meeting on agenda items. So I just wanna clarify one thing on that. We are a business meeting held in public. We are not a public business meeting. So, um, I know some people understand what I'm about to say and some won't. In some churches, it's a congregational led church. The committees, the committee chairs, the, the, um, will come before the congregation and they will present a motion. And then there's discussion from everyone in the congregation. And then there's a vote, but that's not how school board meetings function. And so. The most efficient way to conduct our meetings in public is to have that. Mi- minimum 30 minute time required by law. And we have made, um. It for everyone to come to do that. We can extend that time if we so choose to. And it is on agenda items and anything relevant to the public as it relates to district business. So it doesn't have to be. Just agenda items as well. That is the option we chose in this policy.
Um, I took, what I took from Andy's point, and I'm not sure I have an opinion one way or the other, but what I took from his point was that, um. He felt that having that time set aside at the end sort of fostered communication. It, it wasn't that, um. Uh, just like the, the public having listened to our deliberations might then have additional insight to offer on the content of what we had just done. So I just wanted to clarify that, um, that that was what, uh, kinda what I feel like he meant by that. And. I think when I'm reading number one here under rules of order, that we can always decide to do that as a board. We can, we can take a vote in our meeting and say, you know, we'd like if, if. There's, there's a lot of people here. It's clear they've got feelings, you know, we can. Vote to have an extra 20 minutes or whatever of public comment on topic X at the end. So. I don't think we're limiting ourselves, uh, by not having it every single time.
Correct. And I, and I think the way the policy is written right now gives us more freedom rather than more restrictions. And, um, as you, like on our existing. Agenda for tonight, public comments on agenda items, it is our standard practice. And that's what I think the, the policy gives us that option to do. We can do all 30 minutes at the front. And not have any in, at the end, but our practice is to have always had the time at the end.
So, so I agree, but I think, um, I think people feel more comfortable. Because if they come and then something we discussed tonight and then they say, I really wanna. Uh, talk about that. If we don't have it as an agenda item that gives them that discussion. Because we spent 30 minutes in the beginning, I think it's, it's, we're closing that conversation versus opening the conversation. So I. Would like to say, cause it is our standard practice, you know, public comments on agenda items at the end, just add it.
Yeah, uh, it's our standard practice, but in five years, it might not be that board's standard practice or six years or 10 years or whatever. So I, I think having it in the policy makes sense.
So what you're requesting is that it should say additionally, the board shall include additional public comment period for specific agenda items. Cause right now it says may include additional public comment period for specific agenda items.
Uh, no, I guess with, with may, I think that, I think that settles it. I think that probably covers that base.
Yeah. All right. So any other comments on that?
Um, I just wanted to note that we discussed but never took a vote on adding number two and number four. So I don't know if we want to do that, like to make it all official.
That's what we do at the end, once at our third, at this, at the conclusion of this third reading.
Was wondering if we're gonna add, vote on adding that specific language individually, or do we just vote on the policy as it's written in front of us right now?
Any other thoughts? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept this, uh, policy as written.
I will make that motion.
So moved. Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
400.
All right, thank you.
Third review of student records and access.
On this, uh, policy, I will say that, uh, we did check with the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Some of you had a question about. Do we have to, would we have to provide weight and height members of? Some of you had a question about do we have to, would we have to provide weight and height members of athletic teams? That is permissible to delete that. But we also need to make a decision in this policy over on page three of 11 in terms of any photocopying costs that are allowed to be charged to requesters. And that can range from 10 to 25 cents per copy. So, you know, my history in terms of photocopying has always been 10 cents a copy. I understand, you know, inflation rates change. I'm not sure how, other than the cost of paper and toner, I might might suggest we go to like 15 cents a copy.
So I just want to say that this you have spent so much time on this and I really, it lines up with all the the laws and you've updated it and it was a lot of work. I can just see how much time and work this took. So it's, I think you did a really good job and I really appreciate it. And it's it looks way different than the one we received a few weeks ago.
So I have a question on that. With the ability to send things electronically now, how often do we get requests for paper copies?
Uh, we have a request before us right now for paper copies. But I would say over the course of an average school year, just just from my own experience, probably five, six or seven requests during the course of a year for hard copies.
Any discussion on adding that in?
Adding in the cost, is that what you're?
Yes.
Yeah, upping.
The highlighted portion.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You said 15 cents updating? Yeah, especially with, it sounds like paper is getting, it's not getting any cheaper.
We also have highlighted the weight and height. I know you said it's permissible.
Yes, and we can take that out if you desire.
What is the will of the board?
I think when we talked about it, we were all pretty uncomfortable with the idea of having it in there. So I don't see any problem with taking it out. I actually noticed when I was reading the student handbook that there was a reference in there to directory information and it said something, where was it? There, there was a line in the policy about how the something the board enacted in 1983. So I was looking at that weight and height going, oh, is that leftover from 1983? Is that where that came from?
That that actually is part of the FRRP legislation from 1983, yes.
So yeah, I wasn't sure, but I just noticed that and was like, oh, interesting. But yeah, I don't think it's.
Well, the coaches keep track of it for wrestling and those kind of things. So I don't see that it needs to be in the directory at all.
Yeah, if if an athlete needs to provide that information to a body or an organization, they can do that. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to do that.
Um, I actually had a little bit of an epiphany about directory information versus personally identifiable information that I wanted to share. The whole board received an email from a member of the public who was concerned about it. And I had mentioned it at the last meeting. I was like, not exactly sure, like, because I was noticing that like, things like birthday appeared both in directory information and personally identifiable information. So Bill, stop me if I'm understanding this wrong. But what I kind of realized was is I think directory information, it's not like we're publishing a directory with this stuff in it. It's that sometimes organizations need this information for a purpose and will provide them with like a list of student names for a specific purpose. That's that's, and then the personally identifiable information was more around if your kid gets into something with another kid, you're not going to give personally identifiable information to another parent so that someone could reasonably figure out who the other kid was about. It's about protecting privacy.
That's correct.
Like in a specific incident. And because there was that confusion and it took me like three readings of this to go, oh, I think that's what it means.
The bullying, the bullying legislation is such that, you know, we're not allowed to discuss with the parents of the victim, what punishment, if any, the person guilty of bullying receives. And that that's of great frustration to to many, many parents. But, you know, we can't, we also, we can't disclose social security numbers or anything that is of an identifiable nature such as that.
Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept this policy with the deletion of weight and height and the inclusion of the price of the cost of copying for hard copies.
Can I make one other comment? This, I neglected to go through this one like I did the other one. And there's one awkward sentence on page three, just above the paragraph with the free copying of records. Um, I would like to propose that we we reword it if that's possible to do. And if you guys are cool with it, we can just pass it and I can say it.
Where are you on page three?
Page three, it's the paragraph that's in black type, right above the red one that's fees for copying records. It says, when records contain information about students other than a parent guardian's child or the eligible student, the parent guardian or eligible students may not inspect and review the records of the other students. If such records do contain the names of other students, the principal will seek consultation with the superintendent and or district's attorney to determine how best to proceed. It's, this is easier to look at than it is to hear me read it, but I would propose that we change it to, parents, guardians or eligible students may not inspect and review the records of other students. When records contain information about students other than a parent guardian's child or the eligible student, the principal will seek consultation with the superintendent and or the district's attorney to determine how best to proceed. I feel like it means the same thing, but it's a lot easier to understand.
Yeah, I think there's a situation where grammatically it probably makes more sense. Does not represent a material change such that it changes the nature of the meaning of this. So that's, that's fine if you want to send that to to us.
Felt like I had to say it out loud because we're going to approve the policy.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to accept this policy with the deletion of weight and height and the inclusion of the price of copying and the wording change of the paragraph on page three.
I will make a motion to do all of those things.
And I will, I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Thank you for your review of these.
Glad it's all on video so that we can refer back to it. All right, approval of the minutes, October 3rd, public minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the minutes from October 3rd.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Four zero zero. Do I have a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes from October 17th?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of public and non-public October 17, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on. So there's an edit on the October 17 minutes at the top and it says November, it should say October.
Oh.
Thank you to Amy for catching that.
So.
So we have to fix it.
We have to, first of all, vote down our previous motion. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Zero four zero. Now I will entertain a motion to accept the non-public and public minutes of October 17, 2022.
I make a motion to we accept the minutes of October 17, 2022.
Second.
With the correction. With the correction.
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda.
There are no nominations or resignations this evening.
Thank you, committee reports.
I have a committee report. It's two weeks in a row, two meetings in a row. Uh, so I went to my first budget committee meeting and it was, it was awesome. It was just a great atmosphere. We started off with singing God Bless America. It was a little flat, so we need to work on our breath support. Phrasing and diction are approaching proficiency. So, you know, we got some good things going for us, but we'll get there, we'll get there. It was very informative. Probably one of the biggest bits of news is one of the members has stepped down. So there is an opening right now on the budget committee that that press release has gone out. And is it on our website? Do we, do we know yet? Because I can.
Not sure.
We can send it out if we need to. Let's see here. This says, the Merrimack School District Budget Committee announces that it has an open seat until the April 2023 election. So it would just be for up until April of next year. Committee is looking for Merrimack residents who are registered voters and who have an interest in filling the seat for the upcoming budget year. Anyone interested should send a letter of interest containing name, address, email and phone number too. It's got the address on there, which we'll post on the website. The letter must be received by November 22 of 2022. And then on November 29 of 2022 at seven, the committee will hold public interviews for those who have submitted letters of interest to determine the final process for filling that seat. So anybody who's looking to get involved should contact Chuck Mower. Um, and again, we'll post this on the website so people can have that information. But everybody in the committee sort of laid out their priorities, which probably the exciting thing about that was it was very much in line with our goals and a lot of similar language and similar talking points. Matt gave a very thorough review of where we're at currently and and last year and was very realistic in kind of what we talked about with the budget and where we're at in the economic economically right now as a as a country. So it was very enlightening. I I learned how much it costs to get paper here, you know, it was so, things like that. I would absolutely encourage anybody who's interested in this to go to the budget committee meetings because in that one meeting, I learned so much about a lot. And so I believe the next meeting is the 29th at seven o'clock in the Merrimack High School cafeteria. That's it.
Any other committee meet, committee meetings?
I have a Parks and Rec committee report. They are also entering budget season. The most interesting thing to me that came out of their budget discussions and they're waiting for town council approval on this. But one of the things they're proposing is to sort of diversify where they're getting their budget from is adding an after-school program potentially in the function hall at Wasserman Park, which I I know personally, I know a lot of people with young kids and I think there's definitely need in town. So that was really exciting. And then the other cool thing that they're doing is if you want to use the gazebo at Watson Park or the bandstand at Abbey Griffin Park, they have an online portal where you can reserve it on their website. It's free for residents, but that way, like, if you want to sign up to have your barbecue there on a Sunday afternoon, you know that you get the space and nobody else is going to going to have it. And then the Merrimack Holiday Parade is going to be on December 4th this year.
All right, any other committee reports? All right, moving on to correspondence.
So I had a couple correspondence. One was a concerned parent and I just sent the parent back to make sure that they follow the chain of command, that they just don't come right to the school board, that they make sure. And then, of course, on the public comments.
I had a correspondence from a parent who is concerned about a component of the SCL curriculum in kindergarten and first grade, and that is being forwarded and discussed with leadership. Any other correspondence? All right, that, with that, public comments on agenda items. Chuck, you're the only one here.
Chuck Mower for Depot Street. I was talking to student representative Caitlin Vadenay before the meeting. And I was asking her about her professional career potentials. And she was talking to me about a couple of different choices. And they were both adequately impressive, but they did nevertheless represent a choice. And so I reminded her of how two roads diverged in the yellow wood. Robert Frost actually wrote that poem for a friend of his that lived in England. And he was trying to encourage him to move to the United States and continue his career in poetry. But he was feeling a little guilty about the war and what his part should be, coming to the United States or going into the army and fighting for his country. So Frost wrote the poem for him to show him that there are choices and that those choices have consequences without directly telling him what to do. And so I think that in many ways we are faced with choices that are perhaps as critical as Caitlin's professional career choice and our own future as a school district. It's been a long time having the potential to come together and make a sober choice. And yes, there is always a choice. But what we do is not going to destroy our community. I say that being a lifelong resident. But not supporting the critical needs that we all now know have been deferred far too long. Supporting that is absolutely central to our economic well-being. And I'm sure we're all going to be pulling the same oars in the same boat. So I want you to know that I'm very grateful as a citizen that we have a community that cares so deeply. You don't get a lot of people up here kind of talking as a as a citizen. Usually they have some grievance or some agenda or whatever. We all know that. It's it's sad really that we don't have people that just want to come up here and tell you what a great job you're doing, how much we appreciate it. We hear those stories, of course, filtering down through the leadership and the principals and the school board and so on. But we do all long for a time when we were closer together that we might be more certain of not being driven apart.
I want to apologize to my fellow board members. I skipped over the agenda item for comments. So I would like to go back to that agenda item before we conclude. Okay, well, I do have one comment. In the last two weeks, we've heard a lot about the national scores in math and reading. And there has been a lot of discussion in the media about school districts need to do something. School districts need to do something about this. And I want to say there's always room for improvement. But this district took those problems immediately in 2020 and 2021 and extended our summer programs, extended eligibility to those programs, extended tutoring and eligibility for supports in both last summer and the previous summer. So I just want to say publicly, because there's so much hype in the media right now about districts need to do something, this district has been, are and will continue to be doing a lot to make up for what our students experienced during the pandemic. We have not been sitting here doing the status quo.
So I just want to, since you said that, um, we just, we've had this conversation numerous times as a board, but we really do appreciate our administration and their transparency and their trust in us to have these deep conversations on, you know, what are our goals and how can we get there? And they don't try to separate us, we're, we're working together to to get there. And I, I really do appreciate those deep conversations that we have around this issue and I appreciate that you brought that up.
Well, with that, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, four zero zero. Thank you and good night.